We're gonna get started, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Public Safety Committee of the Baltimore City Council. I am Councilman Brandon Scott, Chair of the Committee. I am joined this evening to my far left by Councilwoman Janice Snead from the 13th District, Member of the Committee, Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District. Councilman Christopher Burnett will be rejoining us in a second. We are also joined by, to my right, Richard Crumbridge, Staff to the Committee. This is the hearing for City Council Resolution 18-0092R, Monthly Council Stat Meeting for Baltimore City Police Department in reference to crime. Deputy Commissioner Bonaparte, for those who will be watching this in video form and may not have seen the previous hearing, can you introduce yourself and your staff that remain? We are also joined today by Ms. Kendra Perlock, Director of the Mayor's Offices of Sustainable Solutions, and Councilman Christopher Burnett from the 8th District, Member of the Committee, is rejoining us as well.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Councilmen and Women. My name is Deputy Commissioner Andre Bonaparte of the Baltimore Police Department. Currently with me for this hearing is Acting Deputy Commissioner Colonel Perry Stanfield of the Strategic Services Bureau, Colonel Darren Garrity, who is the Chief of Patrol, and Colonel Byron Conaway, who is the Chief of the Criminal Investigation Division. Lieutenant Colonel Worley is also here. He's over Homeland Security. He's, I guess he went to the restroom. And Lieutenant Deanna Eflin from my office is here as well. Good evening.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. So, let's just start. Can you tell us where we are to, year-to-date, in reference to the major crime categories in comparison to last year and in comparison to 2014?
So, year-to-date statistics in homicides, we are currently at 202 homicides for the year this year compared to 244 last year. So, that's a reduction of 17%. Non-fatal shootings, currently we are at 452 compared to 468 last year, which is a reduction of 3%. Rapes, 218 this year compared to 263 last year, which is a reduction of 17%. Robbery, 3,397 this year compared to 4,121, which is a reduction of 18%. Aggravated assaults, 3,748 this year compared to 4,100 last year, a reduction of 9%. Burglaries, 4,014 compared to 5,450, that's a reduction of 26%. Larceny, 10,828 compared to 11,508, which is a reduction of 6%. Auto theft, 2,801 compared to 3,219, when that's a reduction of 13%. Arson, there have been 91 this year compared to 205 last year, which is a reduction of 56%. Our total violent crime is down 13%, 7,565 incidents of violent crime compared to 8,728 last year. Our property crime is also down 13%, which is 17,734 incidents this year compared to 20,382,000 last year. Our total Part I crime hence is down 13% overall, with the total number of both property and violent crimes at 25,299 compared to 29,110.
Thank you. And what about in comparison to 2014?
2014, I, I don't have, I'll see if I have some of the statistics I may have for you, sir, if you'd just bear with me one moment. No, I don't, I'm sorry, sir, I don't have that. I will have to get that for, I was calculating that at one time.
Deputy, I can, well, for, for my colleague's standpoint, so I actually have, have it through the end of Week 36. I know that we just ended Week 37. So, because you know, for me, and Deputy, I know you weren't here the last time, but that was one of our requests, is that we also always have that data for 2014, because I personally don't believe comparing us to 2017 really means anything, because I don't compare anyone at their worst, I want to compare them when they're at their best. When we're thinking about Muhammad Ali, we're not thinking about Muhammad Ali who was boxing in 1980, we're thinking about Muhammad Ali who shook up the world when he knocked Sonny Liston out. So, for, in comparison, so let's just, for my, the benefit of my colleagues, so through the end of Week 36 in 2014, we had 151 homicides in comparison to, through, in the window of that same week, we had 196. The Commissioner says that we're now at 2 or something. We also, in 2014, through that same period, had 254 shootings in comparison to 439. And I'll just do robberies for, aggravated assaults to, to be brief. So, robberies during that timeframe, total robberies were 2,370 versus so far, we have had 3,313. And aggravated assaults, ooh, I don't know if we did them back then, aggravated assaults were 2,850 in comparison to 3,649. So, we still have a, a, a long, long way to go, although we are pleased with the, with the progress. And before Deputy Commissioner, what we did last time that I like to do again, is go district by district to discuss issues. We're going reverse order this time, starting with, starting with the Southern District first. Also, but for the citywide numbers, something that, that has been alarming to me in, in recent, and both noticing that in the 28-day and the 7-day, that we're up tremendously in non-fatal shootings even versus last year, which I think should, I know is an alarming thing to you all. Can we talk about that and what has been going on the last month?
Yes. Before, if I may, sir, I'd like to just give a comment based on your analysis and your report of 2014. I said to this hearing, one of the first times when I came here to present, that 2014 is clearly the benchmark, and that we understand what the mission is before us, we're holding our district commanders accountable, and although we're making progress in many areas, as you can see by the 13% reduction in crime, we understand and we still know that there's a long way to go. We talked earlier at another hearing about our staffing situation and not wanting to make excuses, but certainly the agency had many more assets to its availability to, you know, be involved in the crime fight. So, we know that we are at a, at a deficit in terms of resources, but I can tell you here that the men and women of the agency are working very hard towards reducing violent crime. It's a priority. We have put all of our efforts in making sure that patrol is first, and that we are able to get in front of these crimes as opposed to taking a reactionary stance. And we're, that is our method and our tactic moving forward this year. And with that being said, I'll ask Colonel Con, I'm sorry, Colonel Garrity to come to the podium unless he would like to hear from Colonel Conway in reference to the non-fatal shootings that's occurring.
Whichever one you.
But we can go through, okay.
Whatever you think is best.
Colonel Garrity, can you talk about the Southern District? We'll do it in reverse.
No, we, I want to talk about the citywide stuff first before we go, yeah.
Okay. Colonel Conaway.
Yes, sir. Good evening. So, as I said before, non-fatal shootings are up about 41% in the 28-day and 56% in the 7-day. And what we're seeing, without going into detail, we're seeing violence in the Eastern District specifically. Also, it is also, we are seeing some connectivity throughout the city. So, my team, as far as homicide and shootings, are looking at this connectivity along with patrol, because we typically have a, a meeting to discuss deployment. And so, instead of chasing crime, we're trying to get ahead of it. Steve Odell's team has done a tremendous job in looking at ballistics to tie some of these incidents together. So, without going into great detail, we are well aware that there are several incidents that are related.
Thank you.
Yes, and also, we have a partnership with ATF as well, as far as diamond leads, and typically, we look at where the violence is to pick where, where we're going to do our next investigation along with overdoses as well.
So, this is a follow-up, and I expect you guys to have this today. Can you tell us, it would be information, good information for the council, when you look at the victims that we, that we have in that period, in that 28-day period where we saw this spike, how many of them, you know, were either previously the victim of, of a gun crime, or maybe, and/or a suspect, or something like that, so that we can, can further discern what, what's happening out there on the street?
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of them were persons of interest in other cases, so just keep in mind that that's how we're, we're standing, it's retaliatory.
Thank you. Colonel, you want to, we're going to start with the, with the Southern District, and I think you, for our benefit, can you tell us, so are you, you using through Week 37 data? Because we, the latest that we have is Week 36.
This is Week 35 that I have.
So, we have a Week 36 sheet for you if you need it.
I think I have that in front of me. Is this the one? Yes.
Yeah, so.
It wasn't uploaded.
Just.
It's on, it's on, it's up now. See? Okay. I have it.
It's, so, of course, not to jump on the thing, same thing, but the first thing that jumps out is the, the big increase for then, the Southern District in particular to, in non-fatal shootings. So, in the 7-day, it's a 400% jump going from 1 to 5. Is that to neither, none of the representatives, oh, well, Councilman Costello is here, the representative of Southern District are here, but can we talk about where that is in the Southern District? Are we, what are we seeing there? But also, are we seeing increased calls for service in the area? What's, where is it happening?
So, in the Southern, with the two areas that I'm seeing, we had two that happened on a Wednesday, one on a Friday, these are homicides. The shootings are, in the 28-day are from seven, actually incurred seven shootings.
Yeah, no, I meant the, the 7-day is, is non-fatal is up from 1 to 5.
Okay. I got to go back, because I don't, yes. So, what the Southern is seeing is, they had the issue in Brooklyn, which then went down to Curtis Bay. They also had issues over in Cherry Hill. So, Colonel Conaway probably could touch a little bit more on the connectivity to these incidents, but what we've seen in Patrol Division, that a lot of these incidents are not connected. What we're seeing is, where there's more people out on the street, thus, we're getting the more victims. If you look at some of our incidents, there's been multiple victims in these incidents where, as you well know, when these incidents are occurring, it's a lot of shell casings, a lot of rounds that are being fired, thus, a lot more people are being struck. So, not to really get into much of what she's doing down there, you know, Major Brown has a very big district. Again, her concentration has been up into the tri-district area. I don't, I won't go into like all the specifics, but, you know, she has a, a big district. She gets hit in some of these areas where, you know, the incidents that are along that Pennington Avenue, along that, you know, in that Curtis Bay area are, they have, they started and then they stopped. And when her focus is in one spot, it's hard for me to tell her to move that resource from here to there, because we know what it's going to do. So, it, it looks bad on paper, obviously, and one, one is bad, but it's definitely an increase, it's, it's definitely something of concern. The resources that we have, like I say, they were, are going to, I don't want to say exactly where they'll be, but we definitely see the, the incidents that are happening. Obviously, a, a non-fatal shooting is a missed homicide, so we can look at the number of saying five, and it looks great that there's no homicides, but theoretically, the, it's just a missed homicide. The person is not discharging a weapon, just trying to injure somebody, they're trying to take their life.
Deputy, you can actually just pull that mic back to the chair, so you don't have to keep getting up.
Thank you. Just, just to add on to that, Councilmen and, and members of the council.
There you go.
The Southern District, and I will say that there is a, essentially, some disputes that are going on down there that we are aware of. Colonel Conaway has, and is continuing to put assets within that area to help offset some of the things that we're seeing there. There's also a bit of prostitution and things that's going on there that's kind of feeding that. And one other thing, though, that we've kind of been noticing this trend actually citywide, is that, you know, and we're recognizing where we need to improve our enforcement and deployment has been around vehicles. And in many instances, the shootings and homicides that are occurring throughout the city, there's a vehicle involved, which is telling us that vehicles are storing the weapons. So, we are now working, obviously, based on that data, to try to combat that through traffic initiatives, working with our partners from the state police and others, and bringing in those assets to help us kind of thwart that type of activity there. So, we understand and we recognize what's going on here, and to, like to the Colonel Garrity spoke of, down in the Southern District, it is a big district. We're, we're very confident with the command that's down there. She does an outstanding job, very engaged with the community, and we've had several meetings with the community that I know that she's partaked in, as well as her area Colonel as well. So, we're just going to keep, you know, doing what we can down there to help and also to bring assets there as needed to help deal with the crime situation there.
Thank you. And before I turn it, because we're going to ask questions about East District based on the council members that represent them.
Yes, sir.
Before I turn it over to Councilman Costello for the Southern, just want to, as a follow-up, if you guys can tell us if we've seen an increase in the, the days and hours leading up to those incidents, where there are like increased calls for service for certain kind of things, for, for, let's just say, discharging, or CDS, or, you know, things of that nature?
I would have to get back and give you a follow-up report on that, because the information that I have in front of me is not that detailed. I could tell you in the districts that have the ShotSpotter, that is a very useful, useful tool, because it detects shots being fired, and it's something that we track. The Southern has a very small sliver of that in the tri-district, and it's not down in the, you know, well, it's just not in areas, we, we need it all over the Southern District. I'll put it to you like that, obviously.
Thank you. Councilman Costello, Southern District questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Whatever you do, do not take Monique Brown from the Southern District, please, even though she's probably qualified for, for multiple promotions. Major Brown and Captain Joe Jones are absolutely excellent, could not be happier with, with your command, staff decisions in the Southern. We've had a pretty significant increase in terms of drug activity in Sharp-Ledden Hall. I know the Major's been doing the best that she can in terms of addressing that, and I know that she wouldn't ask, but I can ask now. So, is there any way we can get her some more resources in terms of the drug unit? Oftentimes, that activity isn't necessarily on the South Baltimore Peninsula. She really has her hands full with what's going on in Picktown, in Cherry Hill, Brooklyn, Curtis Bay. If there's any way we could get her some additional resources to investigate that drug activity? We have a program that a church runs in, in Sharp-Ledden Hall called Sharp Kids. It's run out of Grace City Church, and we got kids that are coming to after-school program every day, just watching drug activity outside of the 911, well, I'm sorry, we call it 911 building, the 911 Ledden Hall Street Building. So, anything you could do there would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I certainly have concerns that I want to discuss about squeegee kid activity, but I will certainly refrain until we get to the Sun, the Central District.
And great. And Deputy, just a follow-up to the prostitution thing, and Mr. Vedder, this is for you as well. I think we've been able to, in some of the other districts, work in partnership with health and some of the other, I know the Colonel remembers from his time in the Southeast, with some of the other agencies to try to deal with the prostitution from a more holistic view, so that if we get the, the, the folks that are out there, women and other folks out there engaging in prostitution, the help that they need in other areas, it cuts down on the, you know, the supply for the, for the folks that are coming to buy. So, we'll, we'll do, I'll do a follow-up email with you and the Health Department and some others about how we can do something similar with our colleagues that represent that portion of the city in the Southern District.
Yes, sir.
On to the Southwest District, I can see Councilman Burnett burning his thumbs up, getting ready to ask you guys questions. So, we'll just, we'll start again with, with non-fatales in the Southwest, even though we're seeing, there's some other things that jump off the, the sheet for me too. But, so, non-fatales in the Southwest are also up 400 in the 7-day and 75 in the 28-day.
So, absolutely, and there's no, it's, but just in the, the Emerson Village area is where we're getting, Southwest District is really getting hit. There's an, there's an issue going back and forth over there in the Southwest that, probably Major Conaway could speak on a little better. We identify some crews over there that were going back and forth. Again, a, a non-fatal shooting is strictly, you know, it, it, that number could be sitting up top instead of sitting on a non-fatal. And it's, it's the same thing of, the times are all over the place, especially with the Southwest, and one thing we've noticed is that they're around that midnight hour where they're getting hit. A lot of these other districts are getting hit more along the lines of before 10 o'clock at night. Southwest is one of those districts where they're carrying a heavy load of their violence on the weekends as well. 14 homicides year-to-date on the weekends is really a lot, with an additional 21 shootings on the weekends year-to-date. So, that's a, that's a pretty significant number when you come, when you're talking about your, your district. But, we're definitely aware of what goes on in the Southwest. I think Colonel Conway probably has a little better grasp of some of the things that, that they're doing, but I know what we, we realize that they need two DAT teams. So, we did supply them with, one, they had two and 12, which is actually, it's, it's better than foot, I believe, in some of those areas. I think some of those areas have to be targeted for the, the low-level, street-level dealing on the street, that doesn't make any sense, the narcotic dealing on the streets, because that's leading to our violence. It really is, so.
Yeah, so the only thing I want to add is, first of all, I want to thank Colonel Garrity on the patrol side, because we started a major case squad on the west side as well. So, I think that'll pay off in the long run. I'm sure Councilman Burnett is, is concerned with Frederick and Collins, the tri-district space, Baltimore and Hilton, the, you know, some of the areas, when I was over there, we had the same, same issues. So, we are aware of it. Like I said, we've, we've identified two groups that we've, that we know are kind of driving that violence. Also, we just made a, a, a great arrest within the last week in that tri-district space for murder there, and we know that gentleman to run a certain area there, so we're keeping an eye on that as well.
Colonel? Could you, could you speak to the, the council regarding the, the makeup, I guess, in the sense of those case squads, and how we are utilizing them to start to take down some of these organizations? And also, speak a little bit about some of the successes that has occurred, particularly in the east side? If you could just go a little bit into that, so they'll know the impact that those, those units are doing for us. Thank you.
So, so I don't want to get into too specific, because this is televised, so what I do want to say is that we have a pretty strong lieutenant there with two sergeants, with the detectives, working in the capacity where they're looking at some of the historic violence, looking at the ballistics testing that Steve Odell's team, along with the ATF, does, and they're, what they're doing is, they're looking at dismantling some of these organizations that are causing our retaliatory violence. So, we're not concentrated on the same areas as DAT, because DAT would be more of a quick hit. We're looking at a short-term, 30-day investigation into a situation like the area that I sent you, you know, the, the east side squad's stats. So, what we're doing is, we're concentrating on a, on an area, we're looking at the players that would produce most of the violence and targeting them, we're doing search and seizure warrants, we're following up on leads that would close potential cases in the future and also cases that we currently have.
Yeah, I mean, you, I think you hit the nail on the head. As a resident of Emerson Village, folks are definitely very much on edge with the level of violence there. And I believe there was a non-fatal shooting on Frederick Avenue, I think, two days ago, inside of a convenience store, one that, and I, and I would sort of implore a deeper look in many of those commercial spaces. I'll, I'll send you a video that I, I shared with the Southwest Commander at one of the stores that I found to be troublesome, so I'll, I'll send you that offline. But, you know, the, the concern still remains, and that was really what I was getting at around, the, the questions of Foot Patrol, is that, you know, both in Emerson Village and in the Irvington area, those happen to be hotspots, a lot of loitering, which people can, like, they can stand outside, but I think the, the greatest concern that people have is that when there are large groups, there does tend to be sort of outbreaks and violence at some point, and people just feel like they, they want to see more visibility in those areas. Not that, you know, you aren't doing anything there, but the other thing that, that stood out to me was that there seemed to be an uptick in robberies. Looking at the last 28 days, looks like it's up 47%, if I'm, if I'm reading that correct, street robberies.
So, I know we had a carjacking, we still do have a carjacking pattern there, in that Hillvale area, I think that's what you're talking about specifically, and we're keeping an eye on that as well. We do not have a suspect in that. I know they have a persons of interest in this case, but as of yet, it's not closed. So, we're, we're definitely taking a look at that carjacking pattern.
Yep.
So, also, just, just out of curiosity, it seems that the larceny from autos are through the roof. Colonel, do we know if that's in a particular area, so that whether it's Councilman Burnett or another, a count, another council member, they can work with getting information out to the public, how they can prevent themselves from being the victim of a larceny from auto?
So, the district commander would be best to answer that and give that, and now, and give that out to the constituents. I'm sure he does realize that and probably tells people the same thing we tell people over in Southeast Baltimore, in East Baltimore, where I was at, is that, you know, don't leave things in your car. If you're going to leave things in your car, you might as well just leave it unlocked, things along those nature. But, yeah, it's, we have a list of that, it's just a, a lot to go through as far as my level, but I, I'm sure Dwayne has a grasp, and so does Captain Deal about the larceny from autos.
And I, and I think as we move into the winter months, we had conversation earlier about the types of information that we're dispersing to communities. We do, every year, we see an uptick as people start shopping for the holidays, larceny from autos, breaking, breaking, breaking into people's homes, they know, you know, stealing packages off our doorsteps. So, I think as much public education and awareness that we can raise around those issues, because it's, it's bound to start picking up.
Stolen cars as well, people warming up their cars in the winter months that don't have the remote start.
Yeah, leaving your car, warming up, all of that, and I, I know in, in my particular area, there are over 2,000 people on Next Door, that's why I said it earlier, it is a great tool to get the word out to people around sort of these tips that they can take. But, and the reason I mentioned the, the robberies as well, I know there, there was one recently on North Bend and Mallow Hill that, I think that, from what I was able to pull together, I think the gentleman like pistol-whipped the guy on the street. It just seems to be a little bit more brazen, and, and, you know, I don't, not sure how you prevent that kind of thing, I mean, if someone's walking, someone jumps out of car, hits him over the head, I don't know. But, the more information we can get out to people around just being generally aware of your. Uh, but the more information we can get out to people around just being generally aware of your surroundings, regardless of what neighborhood you're in, because otherwise, that particular neighborhood is a, is a pretty good area.
Right.
Um, you, you know, the more, uh, I think we can prevent these kind of things, or just at least people can be a little bit more aware.
I agree. And it's, it's, like I say, it's like a district commander at that level, that's what, you know, the individual cases, if it's not, if it's a pattern, it's a little bit easier for us at this level to identify and to kind of act on. Uh, when it comes down to what's like a, a single incident, it's, uh, like I said, the district, district-level command is, uh, definitely there to put that information out. The more, the better.
I once knew a, uh, district commander who ordered officers to give fines to people operating their cars, so that we can, wouldn't continue to have them stolen in the morning time, and it, it worked out wonderfully, uh, wonderfully.
There was no pushback from the community on that?
No, there was no pushback from the community. This former district commander may or may not be in this room. Uh, let's go to the Western District, uh, same thing, uh, Colonel, oh, this number is actually pretty persistent today.
It's at five, yes.
Four hundred percent increase in the seven day in, uh, non-fatales for the, for the Western.
So the only, I guess the only positive thing that I could a- actually see out of the Western District is some of the areas where, uh, Major Webb has a lot of his deployment, he is not beginning hit. Um, he's be, being hit sporadically i- in his district, uh, eight hundred West Lexington, fifteen, eighteen hundred Baker, seventeen hundred Mulberry, and nineteen hundred Emerson. Um, so that's, that's all, that's the, that's a pretty good, large area for him to cover. Um, the areas that we, we were very concerned with is definitely along that Fulton Avenue corridor, Monroe corridor. He's taking some hits along that Monroe corridor. Uh, but again, there was definitely a crew that was going back and forth with another crew that was branching out throughout the city. And, uh, without the help of Major Con, I mean, Colonel Conaway, uh, we wouldn't have really put a dent in some of this, these, this violence, because Colonel Conaway's group really targeted this, uh, these two groups, and they're still out there. They're not totally subtracted, but, uh, the job that they did as far as targeting, uh, these individuals, and I hope they're listening, that, uh, we, we know a lot of them, and we're still coming after them.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, no, I, I want to say that, um, and I, I hope Major Webb is listening. I want to say that overall, I'm, I'm pleased with, you know, what he and his team are doing. I, I, um, um, I was fortunate to have Major Briscoe, but, um, you know, having Major, I mean, he's on it, um, you know. I, I, I can't say enough, you know, good things about, um, him and his team, and he's hands-on too. So, um, he's, you know, he's not just sending officers to represent him in the community, he's also showing up for crime walks, talking with merchants. I mean, so he's, he's out there hustling. Um, and he knows, um, uh, there, there are several spots within the, um, Matthew Henson community, um, that, that are of concern. But, um, there, there are two in particular, um, that aren't in that community that I just want to bring to your attention as well. I know Major Webb is well aware of it. But, um, Woodbrook Avenue between White Lock and Traction. Woo! Um, I mean, we've, we, we had, you know, homicide there not that long ago. Um, and you can, you can kind of see it. I mean, when y'all put pressure on it, you know, you know, obviously, the traffic ends up being displaced probably over to further Penn North, Cumberland and Cary, further down that way. But, um, it, it's, it's, you know, it, it needs some attention. I'm, I'm quite sure it's on your radar.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it's, that area took a couple hits.
Yeah.
Up in that area. And, uh, they, they, I think they responded very well to it. And they made some very good arrests out of that area. And like I said, again, with Colonel Conaway's crew too, um, they're, they're targeting the right people. It's just a matter of getting to them before they get to, obviously, their next victim.
Right, right. Um, and, and also, if we can continue to, um, uh, put some pressure on, in that, um, Alcon Trolley Terrace area with Bryant. Yeah, um, I mean, and I know that just the layout of the streets works against, against you all, because, I mean, they, they know who's coming in and how you're coming in. You get, you gotta come in, come in one way off of Rice's Town Road, and so, um, the, you know. But that, that community is, not that any other community is not critical, but, um, they, they've pretty much taken over the core of that community. Um, and so I'm asking you to put some additional attention on that. And then, then lastly, um, a, another area that's critical to me, especially when it's, um, um, adjacent to a school. Um, Stricker and Pressman, um, is right near New Song Academy. And, um, I know last year, um, I personally tried to intervene and just come out and, you know, every morning, walk the kids to school and be, act like a crossing guard, just to give a little presence, so that, you know, dealers will at least give them that block in the morning. But, um, they're, they're real comfortable again. And, um, you know, you know, our kids have to, you know, go through it. Unfortunately, they, they're used to it, which is something that we, our kids shouldn't have to be used to. But, um, they, they, they don't even, you know, at this point, they don't even respect, you know, the kids and the families that, you know, it used to be, you know, a time they would just calm down a little bit, but now, you know, they'll post up in front of the school.
It'll be, it'll be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to, uh, the Northwest District. Uh, so let's, uh, let's do both non-fatales and homicides for this one, since homicides had a consistent bump as well.
So what Deion has seen up there, I just want to get down to his little, um, you know, Deion was running very good for a very long time. We actually mimicked a lot of stuff that he was doing up there in Northwest District. Uh, they, they locked down that Park Heights area, and I think I jinxed him a little bit by saying what a great job he was doing. Um, he took some hits up there, um, and the only thing I could say is two of his homicides, and it, and I look at the tw- it's, we, I track it in seven, and then I go twenty-eight, because I think it's, but his twenty-eight day numbers for his two homicides, you know, they, they were, one was a stabbing and one was blunt force trauma. Um, you know, the shootings, obviously, you know, he's, he had eight in his twenty-eight day. And just looking at it from a thirty-thousand-foot view, you know, the lower end of Rice's Town, and then all the way over on the, the issue, the bigger issue was the Liberty Heights area. He took one thirty-five-hundred Liberty Heights and then another four thousand, um, or forty-eight-hundred. I thought it was close, but not being a Northwest guy, I mean, it, it was a great distance away.
Northwest blocks are a little larger.
Just a little bit bigger than some of the blocks in the Eastern, just, just a little bit.
Uh, Councilman Pinkett or Burnett, y'all want to go more further Northwest?
Um, I mean, we just had a, a community meeting, um, for, it seemed to be an uptick in robberies. Again, similar issue in the Windsor Hills community. Um, there were, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see if I can even find it on here. Yeah, it was one residential, three carjackings in the last twenty-eight days. Um, and I think folks were particularly concerned about the carjackings. Uh, so, I mean, I, but I talked to, uh, the major pretty extensively, and he, he came out to the community, um, to sort of, you, you, basically, without going into detail, he shared some more detail than I'd feel comfortable with on, on TV doing, but for strategies that they're gonna, um, be implementing to help what, both calm the community with more visibility, but also target some of the folks that they, they're seeing. Um, but yeah, it looks like that's one of the issues.
They're up, uh, actually, they almost lead the city in carjackings with thirty-six. They're tied with the Northeast. So, um, and honestly, overall, their robberies are up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're looking at a total of, according to Citywide Robbery, three hundred and twenty-five robberies total.
Yep, yep.
So, uh, Colonel, just to, to follow up on that, if we could get to our colleagues, uh, if, if you know, from a larger perspective, from not the district commander, I know they have a great, uh, all of them have a great relationship with Major Hatchet. If there's like a, a, like, city-wide pattern, as you think, is impacting them about robbery, some information we could get to the colleagues to try to help get out?
Yes, I have a city-wide, uh, pattern list, Nick, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, we can definitely get that to you.
Councilman, you done?
Yeah.
Councilman Pinkett?
I, I just want to, and, and if we want to talk about, um, squeegees collectively later, that's fine. But, I, I mean.
You, you can do it, do it all now.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at, you know, the statistics, you know, it seems, you know, that the squeegee incidents, I mean, you know, are extreme low priority. But in the neighborhoods, it becomes...
They're a high priority for us. The frustration level with dealing with some of these individuals is that, you know, we need to take into account, some of them are kids and just misguided, but some of them are just, yeah, for lack of a better term, you know, they, they make people not want to drive down certain streets.
Right.
Um, and, you know, like, we were talking earlier with, uh, Councilman Costello, that, you know, you try to be nice, and it's just like the, there is no rapport, there is no getting across to some of these individuals. Um, us going after these individuals, yeah, we, we, the, the goal was to get out and identify them. Um, Colonel Conaway shop put together a list, actually in the Central District, that really touched on a lot of these individuals that were involved. Um, it, it didn't really touch, we, and we know there's a problem in the Northwest, uh, we didn't have the information.
Okay.
Um, but they are out there identifying, and the certain areas that they're hitting is, is, it's very frustrating for me, and it's definitely frustrating for the patrol officers. Um, I don't think some of our patrol officers are, uh, well-versed enough sometimes to deal with these individuals. I think it needs to be dealt with, uh, with some of the other divisions within the city agencies, other than the Police Department, and, but in the Police Department as well. The goal is not to arrest them, the goal is to make them stop.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and I don't know exactly, you know, what the course of action or the strategy is. I, I just know that collectively, we, we've got to, we've got to figure this out. I mean, because, you know, you know, ultimately, is an arrest where we want to go? Probably not, but at some point, um, when the behavior, um, becomes threatening to the community and, and motorists, something's got to be done.
So Councilman, there's actually a committee that has, uh, started, um, from the mayor's office. I know that council president, I believe, is also involved in that. And something we're putting together that's going to kind of deal with, uh, the, the squeegee epidemic that's occurring throughout the city for all of those specific areas. We understand the problem of it, um, but as the Colonel said, I mean, arresting our way out of that situation, it, that's not, uh, you know, the, the proper way to, to, to deal with that situation. So we, we have to be creative, and I know that there is a, a committee that's being formed to actually look at that. And I believe there may have been a preliminary meeting while I was off at one particular time, I have to follow up. But I do know that the conversations, Colonel Stanfield, is that the, correct? Yes, so that, there's already be, talks have begun, uh, just to deal with the need and what we're seeing also in terms of volume.
And the only thing that I want to add is that we're looking at the squeegee kids to see if they, uh, cross-reference with the robberies, uh, because I want to see if that's an issue that we're having as well. Um, so I need to follow up on that as well.
And, and my, my only other item related to Northwest, and once again, I, you know, Major Hatchet, he's doing a gr- I mean, I'm, I'm fortunate that I have, you know, some really good major, well, not that all of them aren't good, but I, I can only speak to...
You're fortunate.
That. But, um, uh, we, we, he probably needs more resources related to Edgewood Street as well. Um, there, there's, um, um, some businesses there that, um, I, I don't believe that they are, you know, um, assisting the effort, but I think the, the, the dealers are utilizing the fact that those businesses are there to, to kind of be able to plot their trade. And so, um, and other than that, it, it really becomes the concentrated area within that, um, Forest Park handling community.
Yes, noted.
And so, Council, uh, we're going to divert a little bit. So Councilman Costello can, uh, ask his follow-up squeegee questions now, so that we can be done with the squeegee portion of the hearing.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess to start, um, for Karen Stokes, um, so this committee, can you tell me a little bit more about this committee that's being established to address some of the squeegee?
Actually, that's what I was speaking to.
So somebody has to talk into the mic.
I'm waiting for them to come back.
There's, you got, you got the ghost mic up there in front of you.
Deputy took, you took the mic to your seat.
I'm sorry, Council, I'm sorry, everyone.
All good.
Yes, there is, um, so there, there are actually two, um, kind of discussions or committees. Uh, one is coming from the mayor's office, which I just confirmed with Karen, and she's center of that information. And the other one, the council president, um, has also weighed in and has asked for our opinion. Um, we have not convened, um, with, uh, either one yet, at least I have not yet. Um, so I have to follow up with you, but I do know, like, I, I just showed Karen an email I got Friday. So we have to get it scheduled. Um, I know my staff is working with, trying to coordinate that, and hopefully, we can obviously get together and put a robust plan together to deal with, uh, what we're seeing.
Is this going to be a inter-agency?
Sir, it's, I, I, I think it's, well, I can look at the invites who are actually on there, maybe give us an idea if you just...
I think it'd be best if you, if you could follow up directly with the, my council colleague, and I would just like to ask on his behalf, that please, everyone, include him in this, because he's, uh, the most impacted by, by squeegee, so that, that he's aware of everything that's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll, to close out that point, and then I'll get to my question.
Yes, sir.
My, my district includes, uh, not only North Ave, where I have an adjacent boundary with Councilman Pinkett, um, but I also have the entire one hundred percent of the MLK corridor in my district, uh, as well as President Street.
Yes, sir.
Up to Fallsway. So my district is, is hardest hit by the, um, the aggressive illegal behavior. I want to be clear, I don't have an issue, or I'm not stating an issue with squeegee kids. I'm talking about the aggressive violent behavior, where we have citizens that are victims to, again, aggressive violent behavior. I want to be clear on that. Um, Karen, I would greatly appreciate if you could speak with the mayor, and I'll follow up with her this evening as well. Um, and would respectfully request that the mayor consider including me in both of those groups.
Absolutely, uh, Councilman, and, and what's happened is we've been working with, um, Dr. Bunley.
Oh, yep.
To, to figure out, I mean, we don't want to arrest them, but we do need to figure out how to, these kids are out there trying to make money, so we need to figure out how we combine, you know, all of our efforts to, to put them somewhere else. So we have, Pete Hammond was leading this effort. We've not met specifically, but I will make sure that both of you are included.
Thank you.
We welcome any input that you, you might even be able to offer.
No, and I, I certainly, um, not only appreciate, but applaud the mayor's position on this, and, and she understands that this is a, uh, economic issue, uh, and that we need to find a way for, for kids to make money, and I get that. Um, but I also think this is a dual-track issue, in that we have an aggressive violent behavior issue that needs to be curbed immediately. And we also need to be, and again, I, I applaud the mayor that she's thinking about what can we do long-term? And how do we, how do we get these kids plugged in with jobs, because that's critically important?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any data, and Kendra, I, I don't know if this, this question is appropriate for you, but are we collecting data on how many of these, um, how many crimes are occurring in relation to squeegees? Like, what, what's being reported? So not, I'm not talking about a citizen complaining, like, there's a bunch of kids in the intersection, um, with squeegees. I don't necessarily care about that, to be frank. What I care about is how many assaults, um, or robberies were reported, related to squeegee kids.
Are you speaking, I, I guess, to capture that? Are you speaking in a certain, like, area where they would frequent?
Yeah, let me, no, no, let me, let me frame the question another way. When you guys track, um, when, uh, someone's assaulted, or when someone's property is assaulted? You guys aren't tagging it with, um, I, I'm talking about a, a multi-layer labeling approach. Kendra's going to appreciate this, she's a data scientist by trade. You know, the difference between Outlook and Gmail is that in Outlook, an email only goes in one folder. In Gmail, it gets tagged with multiple labels at the discretion of the user. Are we, are we looking at, I'm sorry, I'm a nerd at heart.
I didn't know that.
But are we?
I didn't know that.
I know Kendra knew it, she knows that inside out. But are we somehow tracking, uh, assaults related specifically to squeegee kids? Now, you all, you have to report data based on, what is it, the uniform?
UCR. UCR, yes, Uniform Crime Reporting.
Councilman, take a stab at what I'm asking, please.
I'm, I'm going to translate this, uh, from Nurett language to BPD language for my colleague. So you know how we track, uh, crime that we associate with groups that we're targeting? You know, for example, BGF, et cetera. He's asking if we do the same thing for squeegee. So if, if there's a squeegee group at MLK and Pratt, do we say, okay, we've had twenty incidents of assault that have been accounted, that are related to the squeegee crew at Pratt and MLK?
Let me, let me add one last thing to that. Again, what I'm interested in isn't necessarily an assault that occurs at an intersection that's frequented by squeegee kids, but that's directly related, yeah.
Well, sir, the, the short answer is, basically, it comes as an assault. But one of the biggest problems is, is that... problems is, is that once this happens and the police are called, the people leave the scene. So we know certain locations, like you talked about, MLK.
MLK and McCullough.
Exactly. We've had a problem, on 4th of July, we had a big problem there because of the victim and the fact that the victim lived in downtown Baltimore. The other one is the area is President Lombard. Central District had an incident there based on the detail that we had down there and there was an arrest made on a juvenile, but at that time, when the juvenile went over to bookings, they let him go because of the fact that the sergeant didn't authorize for the juvenile to be arrested. So we've had those types of incidents. In the last three weeks, what I've done is I've put officers at four locations in downtown Baltimore, basically going on the fact that school was getting ready to start back and during the hours of 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So we put a car that works from Fayette and President down to Pratt Street and they stay, basically sit in the intersection to stop the squeegee kids.
Got it.
That's the way we have to do it. The big thing that's helped us out though is by school starting back, we know that the younger kids out there, they're curfew violators, so it's easier to move them on, get a number, get them out the way. Anybody older than what we do is a civil citation.
Right, and, and I don't want to see kids get arrested, I want to, I want to see BPD move them along and get them to where they need to be, whether that's school or work, if they're of work age. Is it possible that we can start, because I'd like to have some data, right? Anecdotally, we can all talk about it to wear blue in the face and that we know there's a problem with violent aggressive behavior by squeegee kids?
I can do it.
And I want to be explicitly clear, I'm not talking about just kids operating a squeegee. Is there any way we could track them?
I was going to say, one approach we may want to take is, so we do have locations identified where squeegee kids operate mostly and we could take a look at mapping crime data related to those locations and get a, at least a visualization of how crime has changed over the last year or two.
Yeah, that, that would definitely be helpful if you guys could work with Kendra shop, she's, she's a resident expert in that. But yeah, I just want to see what's, I would like some data on how many of these incidents are occurring specifically related to squeegee kids and the violent assaults.
It'd be a matter of identifying those predominant locations where the squeegee kids are operating.
I think, I think we can get something done by the end of the week, just give me until the end of the week, we'll figure something out.
That's great, thank you. So Karen, if you keep me updated, I'll make sure I speak to the mayor this evening, if you could get back to us on that. And then the last one is, I know it's in the central, but while we're on the topic, this will be my last question on it. Any, any progress on the intersection of MLK and McCullough? Just because that seems to be the hardest-hit intersection in the city, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, Washington Boulevard and Pratt Street is also.
Oh, yeah.
That's another heavy one. So, um-
Oh, the stretch of MLK between Washington and Pratt? Yeah.
Yeah, Jim Gillis calls me a couple of times a week, so-
He may or may not live a few blocks from there.
Yes, sir, we, we can do that also. The key is, is that basically I've been working with Major Gaines and we've had some other issues in downtown Baltimore right now that we've been dealing with that took us away from the squeegee kids as far as giving them the proper attention that they need. So we can start working on that. I'll get with Major Gaines and we'll set up a detail for the Washington Boulevard area, MLK and McCullough.
Thank you very much. And also I'll just add, the situation is very prevalent on North Avenue between our district, right in between Exit 6 interchange off I-83, heading westbound over to Utah Place. We sent along a video to Terry Hickey of a six-year-old out there in the middle of the median. I mean, that's, that, you know, that's a life safety issue, we can't have six-year-olds out in the intersection, so, and I realize that's not on you guys, but BPD is our front line when we, when we see something that's unsafe and I know oftentimes you guys get blamed for it even though it's not your fault, but anything you can do to help with that would be appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was just going to add, for, for me also, I just want to, for the mayor's office to see where Human Services is in this, because I think for me, they should be the front line in responding to this and trying to figure out how we can see what, what these individuals need as far as other services so that we are not imposing extra stuff on BPD who are already extremely overstretched, but also we have to remind ourselves that we also don't, as my colleague said, want to get in the habit of arresting young people who are not actually, you know, doing violence or anything else, but I think that would be good to do that as well. And as long as you guys don't create a squeegee unit, you won't have to deal with my wrath. We're going to go to the northern district next. So Colonel, a couple of things, so actually the year-to-date, the northern and non-fadals are up 38% and just they're dead even in the 7-day, which is great, but they did have an increase, I know that's important to you, 100% increase in the 28-day. Can you tell us what's going on in the good old northern district?
So what I've seen in the 28-day for the shootings is, and again, it's along that Old York Road corridor, you got 4,000 Alcatraz with, actually it's on the other side, I apologize, so we're in the northwest, you got Edgecombe Circle and then 26th and Royal and Northway.
The Park Heights side.
Um, I don't have that for the 28-day.
No, I'm saying, I said it's on the Park Heights side.
I apologize, it's been a long day, I apologize. Yes, on that Park Heights side and it, Riches did an outstanding job up in the northern district, you know, he did so well that we actually took some of his resources, which puts him under a very big, you know, constraint. Looking at that, his times, he did incur two incidents that were in the overnight hours at 0:300, which, and then the other two at times are at 1700 and 20:300, which I apologize, 3:00 AM and then 5:26 PM and then 11:30 PM. Nothing is jumping out as far with those shootings, like I said, you notice that he is up year-to-date, he did an excellent job in actually getting in front of a lot of this and stopping it. And the northern is, you know, we, we always talk about the York Road corridor leaning down in the Greenmount and sometimes we forget about that, that other side of the northern district and it's divided. If you ever look at a crime map, you'll see the, the division in his crime, but he's-
Just a follow-up really quickly, so in, in relation, because as you know, I literally grew up, the first set of houses in to the northern district on Cold Spring Lane, so, and we know that you earlier were talking about the great job that Major Hatchet has done at like the Park Heights and Cold Spring area. Do you think that's a displacement issue coming from Park Heights and Cold Spring over to Edgecombe, which is about a two-and-a-half-minute walk, if that?
I, I would just add to this that the northern district and the Northwest district, their border initiatives is probably one of the best operating deployment strategies along with the Southwest, obviously the tri-district, we understand the resources and everything that's associated down there, but how those two districts communicate with one another on a nightly and daily basis to me and the amount of attention to detail within those corridors to me is little, is really unprecedented. I mean, they, they do very well. We also supplement them with tactical, I would probably say just about every day of the week, there's some sort of tactical asset that is also deployed alongside that border something from SOD. So, you know, we're very pleased with that. Unfortunately, we know that there are times when we are going to get hit, but I think collectively overall, the, the work that's being done up there, I mean, it really could be dramatically different than if we did not, you know, if that line of communication and that partnership between those two bordering districts was not intact. I would just add that.
Yeah, I would just say that all of our colleagues and even my, my interactions with, with him as well, all of our colleagues speak very highly of Major Gibson and, and also the best barometer for crime in the northern district. My grandmother has said that they have seen a great increase as well.
Great, great, yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, we're going to go on to the northeast district. So Colonel, just, we know that northeast is up 22% in, in year-to-date and up 44 in the 28-day. So let's start with, with those as well. We know that we were up in homicide, but it's one versus, versus zero. Can we talk about, about that?
So if, if you look at the northeast violence, they took several multiple incidents, they took a quadruple on 1700 Homestead and took a double at 5400 Moores Run Drive that elevated their numbers dramatically in the non-fadals. And again, I, I don't put precedence over a non-faded with a homicide because again, the intention is there, it's just the, where God saw it to be a certain way. There's been a, a shift again that will be in command in the, in the northeast district. I, I, the deputy will come probably expand a little bit more, but as far as, you know, what we see in that district, the district has been through a lot as far as the, the previous, some of the previous things that went on in the district, the officers were definitely responding well. This is, if you look at some of the homicides, the homicides, the 4500 block of Woodley, no deployment in the world was going to stop that, it's just, but the 5400 Sedonia, yeah, that was a drop on our part, but we had some information that probably didn't get out there fast enough. The 4,000 Bitterson Lane, myself and the deputy were trying to figure out where Bitterson was, I'm sure-
I showed it to the deputy a few weeks ago.
Right. You know, so it's, it's a very big district and, and again, and you're right, these are areas where some of them probably would never see DAD teams and, and issues like that, but the areas that would see the DAD teams and would see this other, yeah, and not to go into too much detail, some of the areas that I've mentioned are definitely going to see some, have, they're already seeing some targeted enforcement in that area.
Yeah, like, oh, sorry, deputy, go ahead, sir.
I would just add to that, you know, we had a, we had a very interesting comstat session about two weeks ago and we put up on the map, and I know Kendra, I think we kind of talked about this at a VRI meeting and asked you a pointed question about it. We were starting to see some things that in recent crime trends and spikes that we had not, I guess, predicted or forecasted. And so what we did was, we actually plotted the crime from, I think it was July 1st through August 20-something, and that comstat was that Thursday. And what we noticed was that in our specific targeted VRIs and all our other deployment zones that we assemble based on crime intelligence and current trends, what we were discovering was that a lot, it goes back to a previous comment I made earlier, is that, you know, the, the violence was in different places than we were seeing, like for example, 1500 block of Glen Eagle. I think we just had one last week, or was that correct, Colonel? Right, right, exactly. So the times were different, the areas were different, so we had to like really rethink that. We had to visualize what was going on and let the commanders see what was going on because we were telling them that we need dosage in areas where you normally were not seeing things. Again, we talked about the statistics in terms of the VRIs and obviously there are great reductions going on there. Where we are, we are able to reduce crimes, but certain patterns were starting to occur and a lot of those patterns are, we believe, associated with vehicular violence. So we have a real, in our current planning and strategy, we're having a real strategy to deal with that in terms of, again, traffic initiatives and things of that nature, but also giving commanders that, that kind of pointed direction and making sure that they are make, that they are covering areas and that we're patrolling as best we can outside of our normal targeted enforcement zones. In other words, those cars that are not specifically assigned into those problematic areas, like what are you doing? What is your daily task for the day? What are the supervisors directing you to do and holding those individuals accountable? So that's kind of like what the strategy has been, yes, ma'am.
So Kendra, hold on one second, ma'am, actually, go ahead.
Just wanted to quickly add that, yes, in a daily VRI briefing, in addition to looking at crime that's happening within the VRI zone, you know, we're looking each day also at what's happening just outside those zones, recognizing that displacement may be happening.
Yeah, just deputy, as a, as a follow-up to that, I think that what's important for me and, and I agree with you that we, we have, we have to do that, because even when, for example, well, we, we had the discussion about 5400 Sedonia and the Radicchio and I think that the work that Colonel Conway has done there is something, as you know, is somewhere I have to drive past it anytime I go home, right? So I can see for myself what's happening there and hear from my neighbor what's happening there. That area is an example where I think we fell because not only did we all know, but there was also consistent calls for service. And I think that's important, in particular when you think about the northeast, because even if Captain Preston wanted to say, hey, you know, and we all know that, that Lockraven with 1500 Glen Eagle is important to her, I want a car to go up there? In that district that runs 20,000 over any other district and, and calls for service, that's just not possible, right? Because who's going to have in Sector 2 of the northeast downtime to actually go and say, okay, I'm going to proactively patrol in this area? It is just simply not going to happen. And that's why I consistently made the case when they originally made that and I told them that two isn't, one is enough, two isn't enough, it should be three or four at minimum to deal with that upper portion of the district, but also because we, we haven't yet realigned the district in these resources, again, that's why the pushing for the use of the online and other things are important, because even when district commanders have all this, this data and resources that, to analyze in front of them to say, hey, we're getting a bunch of calls for this area, right? So for example, another one that we're consistently getting calls about right now is Bel Air and Parkmont and they send them when they can and then they're gone, right? So the, the stuff just continuously, continuously still festers there and then it blows up. How are we going to, to deal with those kind of issues, right? Because for the most part, I know, and, and sorry, Councilwoman, I'm going to let Councilwoman Snee ask some northeast particular questions too. I know, and we all know that we have to, when you're talking about the northeast district, right? You talk about Chum, Bella Edison, Harford Road, Bel Air Road, you control those, you control the crime, but when you're citizens who are living in a Taylor Heights, or you're, you're living in a Lockraven or you're living in Overly and you have these small one-off shops that are just literally up in a corner that most people don't even know is in the city and you call 911 all day, every day and they never get there on time, mainly because they're actually out on another priority one most of the time. That's never going to change for them unless we either allow a lot more discretionary resources to the northeast to deal with those other areas, be it that, be it some kind of organized team, or we change the structure.
So I, I, you, you said a lot there, Councilman, and I, and I think to your point, I think it's going to take all of that. I mean, certainly the re, the reposting initiative that we are embarking upon with the help of Drew and the mayor's office and Kendra and all of those individuals is certainly going to help us in that direction. We do know that that's going to be a, that's a project that's going to take some time. So in the interim, you know, we just have to do a better job. We have to really track the data. One of the things that you talked about there was something even when I was a district commander, I would always look at, and I know that Colonel Garrity, you know, we, we speak about this quite frequently, is, you know, the breadcrumbs. What are, what are, Colonel Garrity's thing every morning is the amount of discharging that's occurring in the city every day. And, you know, little things, 911 calls, well, that data, we know, is readily available and at the disposal of every district commander and every captain. You know, they have to, you look at that data and see what's, what's, you know, the root cause behind that and then make an informed, intelligent decision as to what we're going to do in terms of, you know, deploying assets to that area to, you know, thwart something that may occur or that is about to occur. So I think part of it in twofold is, yes, you know, we know that the telephone reporting unit coming online and what that's going to do in, you know, reducing call volume for patrol officers and all the other things that we talked about previously. We also know that the post-redistricting is obviously the next step in that journey. And then there's also, and I was talking to Mr. Vedder earlier about this and just to, I think this is the appropriate time to, to talk about this and raise this issue is that, and just for clarity, so the telephone reporting unit, the aspect of what we discussed, it's kind of a two-pronged effect. One of the things that we immediately want to do is to get the telephone reporting unit up and running so that the calls that are currently coming in, that we can divert those calls in a way that is satisfying the individual on the other side of the phone. But at some point, we need to also move along and recognize and look at what types of calls to service are we actually handling? And as I spoke to Drew earlier in the hallway, right now, if you call nine-one-one and say, my son doesn't want to go to school, a police officer has to come and respond. So at some point, you know, we need to take a hard look and evaluate and make a determination as to, is that something that maybe we should, you know, really look at and consider? So that's one, that's another part of it. This part that we're doing at TRU is really operating within the confines of the current operating procedure, which has always been on the books in the Baltimore Police Department. And then we're going to have further conversations and dialogue as to how we can reach that other area in terms of telephone reporting, which will also give us an even greater or significant call reduction, a call for service reduction. So I think, again, recapping cumulatively, all of those things, I think, is really going to help us. And I know that collectively, all of us here working together, we can do that.
So that mean that the northeast district is like the southwest, going to be getting another dad team?
So, you know, I will say to you that, and there's some people in the room here like Colonel Stanfield and myself, who started out in the northeast district. And, you know, I will say that I am impartial to the northeast district for that reason. But, you know, again, you know, we will do the best we can in terms of how we are placing assets throughout the entire city. But again, crime is a driving factor for it, so that's what we look at. If the data is there to support that and we have the resources, whatever we need to do, we will do that.
Yeah, I mean, and that was actually going to be my next point because I do think that for once, we do have folks in the department that understand that it should be the data driven, and the data is there. For example, northeast alone has four hundred and eighty-nine robberies, right? So, you know, the only one district that is higher than that right now is the southeast, right?
But I could add to that, sir, is that, yes, they do have those numbers. But remember, we had a real significant robbery problem that was occurring. And that we put Colonel Conway's, that's when we first started off on this, and they did a great job, and it drove those. I haven't looked at those numbers, and I apologize for that, but I want to say that I believe, Colonel, am I right, that they're trending downward?
Down eight percent in southeast.
Oh, yeah, we're just saying, we're actually still in the northeast. And the northeast is actually up fifty-five percent in robberies in the seven-day and twenty-two in the twenty-eight day. I was just saying that the northeast and the southeast lead the city in robberies. But when you look at the comparison, when you think about that, et cetera, that's my portion is that we have to see those areas because even the southeast only, it's only assigned eight for that, right? And when you think about, we have to have, have the Colonel and other folks have the flexibility to do with it.
Yeah, so I have a robbery initiative in the southeast and then in the northeast. I think we have to definitely pay attention to bank robberies because they're up like eighty-two percent.
Another one today, right?
Yeah, eighty-two percent. So I talked to the FBI, they don't have explanation, but we're going to get to the bottom of that because right now we had thirty-one versus seventeen.
And I'm just, Colonel, a quick follow-up on that. Because I've noticed that a lot of the ones, at least in the northeast recently, have been ones that are way out and like literally close to the county. Are we seeing these, again, these crews that are hitting on both sides? Because we know we had a crew a few years ago that were hitting on both sides of Harford and Bel Air Road and also Pulaski Highway on both sides, city and county. Is that what we, is it like a regional thing again?
So, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stretch to say that. And the only reason why I'm going to say that is because they know that on the city side, the penalties are not as high. The stakes are not as high. So, again, you know, looking at, it is easier to get from the county to the, the city to the county into a highway to get away for a bank robbery. But again, we have to look at why we're seeing that increase. And I know that Fridays are typically nationally when they, when they commit bank robberies.
And Councilwoman Snead? Oh, well, the eastern district is next, ma'am. Eastern district. Colonel, we'll start with, yish, with the twenty-eight day for shootings there being up one seventy-five.
So without question, I think we all, well, if, I mean, we're on TV, so I won't exactly get blocks, but the south part of the east, eastern district, and then parts of the north part of the eastern district have been going back and forth. It's not really any, it's, if you look at his incidents, they've had multiple, multiple incidents. Seventy-eight hundred Durham was a double, fourteen hundred Eager was a double, nine hundred Broadway was a triple, seven hundred Mello was a triple, fourteen hundred Darley was a double. And that says to me, there's a lot of people out on the street and they're doing, I'm not going to, I can't say Lloyd and Nick aren't doing well. Obviously, it's been a bad month for them, but they were doing, trending in an absolutely great direction in the eastern district. It's been a bad month, and it's something that we've, we saw, and we just didn't react fast enough. And that's on, that output that is solely on my shoulders. That is something that I should have saw and then directed to Lloyd. I'm not going to blame him or his command for some of these acts of violence. And honestly, I'm not going to blame anybody for some of these acts of violence because the most recent act of violence occurred when everybody was down because of an incident, and they were down there after the fact. And people just, some of these offenders don't really realize that when you pull the trigger on a handgun, the lives you're affecting. And when you're going to come out of an alley and just open fire on somebody when everybody is there, that's saying something. And it's, Colonel Conway is definitely invested in East Baltimore. We are invested in East Baltimore. It's one of those turnaround districts. And I don't like looking, you look at the year-to-date numbers, and they look very good. The twenty-eight days do not look good. And it's just a matter of continuing to hit these groups. And honestly, hitting the groups is one thing, but keeping them incarcerated is another. This is one of these areas, and these areas on Mellow Court and on Broadway and on Port Street and up in Darley Park, that we have to distract these individuals. They're not going to go anywhere, they're not leaving those areas. And I think Colonel Conway can touch on a little bit more, and the efforts that, we won't really go into every effort, but it's on our radar, and it's, and I hope some of them are listening in the fact that we know who you are, and we're coming after you.
So just to touch on a little bit, so we talked about this a little bit earlier as to what's related and what's not. I'm not going to get into case-specific, but I can tell you that just hours ago, we got three handguns. Hopefully, they'll come back in some of those incidents. But we are totally focused on that corridor that we mentioned earlier.
Councilwoman Snead?
So neighbors are still like feeling, especially in McAldery Park, are still like very frustrated because of all the shootings in August. And then they repeatedly sent emails asking for like cameras. They feel like a neighborhood right down the street who didn't have as much crime or some of the nuisance activity that one neighborhood, they feel like they get it right there in McAldery Park, but the resources are not showing when you talk about camera. Do cameras make a difference in the neighborhoods anyway?
I think they're a very useful tool when it comes to this. Do we catch a lot of incidents on some of these cameras? Yes. And yes and no, because the systems that we have, they're, they, I won't go into detail what we have because it's on TV, but they're a very useful resource, but it's also twofold. We're getting acts of violence right underneath these cameras.
So I would add to that, Councilwoman, and it's a great question. And absolutely, there's tremendous value in the city watch program. There's also tremendous value in the technology that was placed in East Baltimore as well as West Baltimore with the ShotSpotter technology. You know, we've had several instances where officers have been, you know, by the, just the sheer timing of a ShotSpotter alert, being able to respond to a call even before the dispatcher get it is a tremendous asset to us. Now, one of the things, Drew and myself and others this morning, this afternoon, prior to this meeting, had a very, a second meeting regarding an initiative that we're doing to build out the CCTV and a city watch program. As you know, and I think it was discussed earlier, I think we're somewhere around a number of seven hundred cameras, and we have some other ones that's coming on through grants and other opportunities for the agency, which will take our number up to one thousand. But equally, it's challenging with that is that we need to increase the staffing in that effort. So we're working collectively with identifying ways on how to do that because we understand, again, you know, as far as we're concerned, everything is about the crime fight. Okay, we already spoke about the officers, we understand that we're understaffed, and we're, you know, the challenges through attrition or whatever that's occurring with that. So how can we get better? And one of the things that I know that we can get better with is by utilizing these cameras in what's called proactive monitoring. In other words, having a person at the console, working in a specific geographical grid, and is looking for activities that could alert a ground unit on the, on the ground, as well as the aviation unit or whatever assets that we have out there to make sure that where everybody is dialed into those areas. Another thing part of it is, is that in that specific area with McAldery Park, there is absolute direct relationship between Captain Brown, the major there has just retired from the southeast district, I'm sure you're aware, as well as Major Wells. So the eastern district and southeast district command, they work harmoniously with one another over there, similar to the, what we're seeing in the, in other parts of the city as well. But there is coordination effort that's there, and we are utilizing our resources as best we can. In addition to that, there's an SDSC room, as we know, in the southeast district. So again, the district commanders are fully aware, the Colonel spoke about, you know, the last incident that occurred, I think it was just in the southeast district, and Colonel Garrity actually was there himself, I can't remember what day, I know it was on the weekend.
Six hundred block of Elwood, Elwood and mine.
Just south of that, but you understand the area there. So, yeah, we are deployed there, you know, that was, that was an unfortunate incident that occurred there for many reasons, and I know the Colonel has addressed that. But, you know, it's, we're definitely laser-focused on there, and there is assets that are, that's actually assigned in doing work in that particular area as we speak.
Okay. And then another issue, too, that I'm just curious, will, will we have, and I sent an email about it earlier, will we have someone who will be the major of the south, will we name someone of the southeast district?
When the commissioner returns on Thursday, that is one of the first order of business. We have that district and another district.
Northeast?
Yes, sir. And other areas within the department as well. And I know that that's something that is high on his agenda once he returns. So we'll have those discussions as soon as he gets back. We certainly don't want to keep those chairs vacant. We're in the crime fight, and it takes a tandem of commanders to make it work.
And then another issue still that we're, and I just called over for some maps at this point because it's still going on with, and when anything happens in that Pizza Bowl, Lee's, Patterson Park, we can't get officers to commit to who district is it? It's still, it's driving me insane.
Anything you need, Councilwoman, you let me know, you will get. And they, they don't, there is, that was a big issue, and we could speak offline about the incident happened on last week. No, I said we can speak offline, we'll speak offline. And yes, so when it comes in through nine-one-one, it's already coded what district it is. So these officers and whoever's telling you it's not my district, I would love to find out who they are. You please let me know that they're not committing to an area, and I'll have a discussion with them. And I understand why it's so hard just to say, we're police, we'll go into an area, we'll take care of the problem.
And I did ask both majors if they could attend the community meetings. We haven't seen the, especially in McAldery Park, we haven't seen anyone there, the community liaison officer, and no one has showed up.
Which, which, the one on Mofford?
Uh-huh. And so Major Wells committed and said absolutely, and interim, I guess, Tamika Brown, did I say that? Has committed, yes. So, but we just want to make sure that it's someone always on that rotation for McAldery Park to be there at these meetings.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And actually, before we go to the southeast, also, Deputy Commissioner, this is for you because a couple of my colleagues have made complaints to me about this, and this is something that has been recent since Commissioner Tuggle took over. So I guess it was last year Colonel Worley actually helped us, he and I worked on this. So none of my colleagues should be saying to me, and it was said that, to some of my colleagues, that it was said that they didn't want to get phone calls or text messages, should be not receiving information from district commanders when incidents of violence happen. So we actually, Colonel Worley, last year, we went and I gave him all of the phone numbers, and we actually had an instance when I came to Comstat, and we talked exactly about how it should happen. So when incidents are happening, they definitely should be getting their call and a text from the district commanders so that they are not learning on Nextdoor or getting a call from a citizen or some nasty tweet on Facebook about incidents of violence. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, sir, that's, that's, you know, we attribute.
I don't want to single anybody else.
No, 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 we're not. I will say that we attribute some of this to just new command and training. So there's some districts that do it very well, whether it's through a group me or some sort of mass communicator app or notification through group texts or something, they do it very well. Colonel Garrity and I have had some conversations about that. And as a matter of fact, the commissioner as well has spoken to me about it. So what we're going to do is we're going to work to kind of standardize it and this way that all those interested parties, whether it's community leaders or council people, at one time will get that blast of just that relative pertinent information without going in extreme details, just a notification that this has occurred. So we're doing that. I know that Colonel Garrity has already talked about that, I think it was last week, Colonel, or something.
Yes.
And we will continue on that and try to get something that's very standardized amongst all command staff members. There's certain districts that do it extremely well.
Let's go through the southeast and then the central, so Colonel, same thing. Non-fatales seem to be the driving, the driving thing in the southeast right now.
So going into the non-fatal shootings, you know, again, George, he got hit a little bit harder on his northern boundary. I mean, so two hundred Luzern, the six hundred Lakewood, and five hundred North Curly. He had a homicide most recently, or actually, they had a homicide most recently on six hundred Elwood. Just not seeing much of a connectivity as far as with those incidents. They did an outstanding job at a Colonel Conway shop, again, putting down a very volatile group in the southeast district along that, that border, or you mean, I could say, what you want to talk about? I was going to say the address. Oh, so four hundred North Rose, it was related to the incident that happened further down to the southeast district, which I don't think any of us would have forecasted out that any group from four hundred rows would go down on the Boston Street and then commit a robbery and a homicide. And I think that just goes to what Colonel Conway's crew did down there. It was a long investigation, it wasn't easy to get done. And it's, the bigger issue in the southeast, and, you know, we track these non-fatal shootings, and obviously, I don't want anyone to get shot in the city, but robberies in the southeast Baltimore have always been the number one focus. And they did an outstanding job in transition. If you look at their numbers, it's almost that it's, I'm not going to say it's, it couldn't happen, but it did happen. The drop in robberies in southeast Baltimore is also attributed to what Colonel Conway's helped out with. You're talking about a thirty-eight percent reduction in seven-day, twenty-four, twenty-eight day, and then seventeen, which doesn't seem like a lot, but you're talking about seven hundred and fifteen robberies this time last year compared to five hundred and ninety-five. Obviously, we know the areas of robberies that are concerned. It's a matter of getting out there. And if, I've always posed this question to my bosses when I was in the southeast district, and it's very hard for me to then go back to a southeast district commander and say, I want you to tell me what a robbery suspect looks like. You know, we track a lot of things in this agency, and sometimes robbery, and it's, sometimes it's out of necessity, which is not an excuse for anybody to do that type of stuff, but we see groups. But we see groups going around, I think Colonel Colley probably could touch on it a little bit better than I could.
Yes, I'll just give you, I'm sorry. Just give you a snapshot of southeast district pattern cases. We had a carjacking pattern case, we just, we just cleared that. We had another pattern case.
What was that, was that the, was it the Conklin Street area for carjackings?
It was Golf Street, Golf and Duncan. We also had another street robbery pattern with a carjacking pattern. They hit all over the place, Kenwood, Washington, Eager. That was for a total of three cases. We put that one down, and then we also had a CRV collector's carjacking pattern. They had 16 cases, we put that one down. The last time they hit was in August. So, we're, like I said, we have a, a small contingent of detectives that are working an initiative-based strategy there, three times a week.
Thank you, and thank you for that, because you know that, that Conklin corridor is notorious for robberies, especially with the, the heavy immigrant population. Central district, and we'll just go right into it, so they're up 60% in the 28-day for, for non-fatales, and they're actually up in homicides year-to-date.
So, in the 28-day in the central, if you take a look at it, and he had a double on 202 West Mulberry, which, if I'm not mistaken, honestly, the central is very hard for me to look at some of the numbers, because there's so many hospitals that sit in the central. The one thing that stuck out to me the most is what he's having a problem with, and I could touch on it, is the lower end of Pennsylvania Avenue. He's got some violence going on down there. He took a hit up on 1600 Pennsylvania, but his incidents are happening towards, like towards MLK, in, in that development down there, which is definitely, it's a powder keg. And we put a lot of resources on Pennsylvania Avenue, we do a lot of resources to the east and west of Pennsylvania Avenue. The western butts right into the, to the central, that's why we call it the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, where we have, but the staffing is short, as far as how we're going to cover that, as far as when we're going after some of these groups, again, and I'm not, you know, I don't, I love to give credit where credit is due, Colonel Conway shop again has assisted along that area, like the deputy had made mention to it, and when we say we're a team effort, it's everybody. So, looking at his, and I think the 301 Calvert, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't believe that's even, it's, you're not going to deploy for that. The more pressing issue, and I will say this, we just had recently in the central, where we just had the incident at the uniblock of Howard at Baltimore, where there was just this week where they felt the need that it was okay to pull a shotgun out and a handgun and go at somebody. That's, that's disturbing, to say the least. It was in downtown Baltimore, is an incident that definitely caught my attention. I know it caught everybody else's attention, and it's, Colonel Stanfield assists a lot during the daytime hours. You know, his staff is limited, it isn't like he has a full contingency of things. But we realize how important downtown Baltimore is, and to get an incident like that at Howard in Baltimore is not, not a great thing for us. And if you want to, oh, okay.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My predecessor on the council, Bill Cole, brought to my attention that when he was on the council, at one point, I think in '08 or '09, that the parking from Pennsylvania Avenue was removed, and that was something that the major in the central district thought was a useful mechanism to curb some of the violence. And just thinking in terms of, you know, that, that stretch of like 1500 to the 1800 block, right, right above Lawrence, is there any utility to that? Is that something that's been discussed?
No, not, that hasn't gotten to me, I can, that's the first I'm hearing of it.
Okay, I'd just be curious if there is any utility to that, working with.
I'll reach out to Major Gaines, and I'll, I'll find out for you.
Do you have any updates on, we've had an increase in violence in Madison Park and Pedestal Gardens? I know there's been three shootings there over the last two and a half months or so. Do we know if that's gang-related, or what's going on there?
Let me get back to you on that. I don't want to say something out of turn, let me get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring just a couple areas to, to your attention. And I know Deputy Commissioner's well aware of where I'm going to go first. I feel like I almost don't have to say it, but, um, once again, I'm concerned about my entire district, but when it comes adjacent to one of the schools in the district, I pay extra attention. And so, the corner of Linden and North, it's just been chronic as it relates to, you know, entrenched, you know, drug dealing, you know, right at that, that intersection. And, and I, and I know that, you know, Major Gaines and his team are working, but, I mean, you, like, and I, I feel like literally I can tell you right now that, you know, there's probably a gentleman, and I use the term loosely, standing right at that corner, a black bag strapped across his shoulder. Today, he usually has on black sweatpants, they're actually soccer-style sweatpants, but I've never seen him play soccer, but today he had on gray ones. But, I mean, it's, it's like, and then, you know, if he's not there, then he passes the bag to somebody else who, you know, has pretty much the same, same uniform. And, and I'm, you know, I don't know police strategy, I don't know law enforcement, but to me, you know, violence typically follows, you know, once these guys get really, really comfortable. And I, you know, once they start just taking over, and, you know, it's almost like that, that Bruce's carry-out becomes theirs, that laundromat has become theirs, it just seems like it's a level of comfortability that something's getting a spark off. And so, I think that's part of the reason I just keep calling and calling and say, we, we gotta, we gotta get this, because it, that's one of those corners where it seems like every maybe six to eight months, you know, it, it kind of has that ebb and flow, and if we can catch it before, you know, it, it gets to that point where, you know, now we got people fighting over, you know, a certain turf. So, and I know Major Gaines, and so I have a meeting, I think with the major tomorrow. Now we're working with the school and the community, because we know it's just not law enforcement. Some of those, some of those guys actually live in the community, others are coming in, and so we've got to work with the community as well. But I, I just got to keep raising that on your, on your radar. And then secondly, sometimes you're doing such a great job on Pennsylvania Avenue that the, your, your effort, you know, bleeds over into, you know, areas like Brunt Street. And so, the 2100 block of Brunt, you know, is, is catching it, because you're doing such a great job on Pennsylvania Avenue. And, you know, that, that's an unfortunate situation that, you know, if you're doing really good in one area, sometimes it gets displaced into, you know, especially those kind of alley streets where, you know, they're off of the, the main stretch, but those, those residents have no relief.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Costello.
And just echo what Councilman Pinkett said, I mean, you guys have done a ton to clean up that stretch, you know, 1500 to 1800 block of Pennsylvania, especially Pennsylvania and Lawrence. I know that intersection drives you all crazy, like it drives me crazy. But then we get some of that displacement, and eastbound into Upton, into Marble Hill, Madison Park. So anything we can do in terms of more resources, and I know that's been the theme of tonight, and, you know, I, I understand. Anything we can get, get more resources there to, to help curb that displacement as well and just stop it. And Kendra and I were on a VRI walk with the mayor two weeks ago on Penn Ave. A lot of that drug dealing activity is still going on, on Dolphin Street in between Pennsylvania and Druid Hill. You've got those two corner stores there, Harlem Grocery on 1100 block of Pennsylvania on the east side. And then there's another, a corner, well, it's not a corner store, a small market store on, was it Druid Hill, Kendra, across the street from Union Baptist. So a lot of that activity is continuing to congregate in those two stores, but I'm sure you guys already knew that, but just pointing it out.
And there's no doubt, Councilman, it's, I, I use an analogy of a person sitting in a full bathtub. You know, when you sit in the tub, the water's going to overflow, and it goes into other areas, and, uh... No, but it is, it's overflow, it's, I mean, you know, I could use, I could be all educational and try to act like, you know, but I mean, it is. I want to put people, you know, and, and we, I want to get individuals off the street that need to be off the street. I don't want to go in and push a problem into another neighborhood, because all that does is, I put officers on Pennsylvania Avenue, they put their own foot, it pushes the problem in somebody else's neighborhood. You know, so I think all of us in the city need to get together and be like, this is what we're going to work on, this is what we're going to do. It's not just, Baltimore City does this, I understand we can't get our own way sometimes, and it's, you know, but it's a team effort across the city. And not just the, right, not just the, VRI is great, but we need additional help, and you, I think you understand.
Yeah, definitely Upton, McCullough Homes, so, thank you. Rich, sorry for waking you up with the bathtub analogy.
Councilman, I, I think that Nancy was better than the Odell Beckham one you gave out earlier.
Yeah, I mean, he signed a long-term deal, and he's going to get hurt.
Yeah, but before you got, before you guys get out of here, two, two quick things. Let's talk about gun arrests very quickly, and as we know, this is, for me, the arrest category that matters. So it says that we've made 915 total this year, which is a 17% increase over, over last year, which I think is a great thing. Can someone tell me the total amount of guns that we've recovered this year?
So, the year-to-date gun arrest for 2018 is 915.
Yep, yeah, 915.
Compared to 784, I think your, your more pointed question is the actual amount of weapons.
Weapons recovered, yes.
Right, I don't, that's not on here, yeah, I don't have that, we can get that for you, sir.
What's that?
Yeah, but, but certainly, you know, it's a telling story, right? You know, we.
We don't have the total number recovered?
I was on, I was on vacation a couple weeks ago, and I came back, and there was just a tremendous amount of violence. And one of the first things that I did after speaking with Colonel Garrity, I was, I'm looking, I said, what's going, where's the gun arrest? And, you know, even though I knew we were doing better, right, I mean, this is dramatically better, but yet there's still a lot of guns that are out there in the street, and it's a lot of work to do. You know, and I, I applaud the Commissioner in his effort in bringing in, leveraging those federal partnerships to help us with that, because there is certainly a more pointed focus and view about what we're going to be doing with individuals now caught with handguns. So, I mean, we are, you know, the gloves are off, it's, in many instances, there are federal initiatives and federal efforts behind what we're doing, you know, to really send a message that it is not cool to have a handgun in, in the city of Baltimore.
And so, I'm glad, that's one of the reasons why I asked, and if you guys can get us the total number of the weapons recovered, that, that would be greatly appreciated. And that's, I asked that question in particular to get to that point.
Yes, sir.
Because for me, and Mr. Vetter and I have talked about this before, I think that we have to start going to the next level when it comes to the guns, right? So, let's say, for example, we catch some kid who works for some big-time drug guy with some stuff, and we're going to charge him with all these charges. Well, if he tells us all the information that we need to know, what do we not do, right? We lessen the charge for him. But, in my recollection, we, we have not yet tried, or if we did, we have not been successful at going to the next level with these guns. So, the same way that we had that squad that was going out looking at fentanyl dealers and charging them directly with homicide, we should be tracking down these folks, because we know, and that's the other data point, if you guys could tell us the origin of, of the guns recovered, right? Whether they're from Maryland or not, because we know a lot of them are not. If we start to track down these people who are dealing the guns to the folks in our city that are committing these crimes, and charging them federally or at the state level with these crimes, I think it wastes in a message, because people can have all the conflict they want about whatever they want on the streets of Baltimore, if they don't have the weapon to carry out with their, their, their means of solving that dispute, we know that we would see less and less. And I think that when that message gets out to folks, that it's not okay to do these straw purchases, it's not okay to illegally transport and sell guns. But right now, they get off scot-free in, in, in our, in our approach.
You're absolutely right, sir, and again, you know, working with ATF and several other partners, the FBI, the US Attorney's Office, all of the, we meet monthly, and we talk about not just specific cases that are going on, but also, we, there's just some real healthy information exchange that's occurring. But I, I point out ATF specifically because of what they are committing to us in terms of, you know, stuff that they're going to help us with in the lab, stuff that they're going to help us with in analytics, as well as that. So, all of these things coming into play, and then obviously leveraging that into federal prosecutions is the aim and the direction that we're going. As a matter of fact, Colonel Conway and I have a meeting with the ATF SAC tomorrow. So, again, to continue those conversations and come to an agreement as to how we're going to approach.
Colonel, you were going to add something?
No, no, I was going to add what he, what he just said, that we're partnering with ATF. We do know the origins of it, a lot of people think that it's absolutely outside of Baltimore, but it, it is a Maryland issue as well, Virginia, Pennsylvania, so we're seeing that, you know, when it comes to where the guns are coming from.
Thank you, and, and just my, my last thing, I know Colonel and I have talked about this offline. I know that we don't directly track it, but just Deputy Incarnate, if you could tell us in your estimation, how much of our violence in reference to drug shop or marijuana shops in the city? The connectivity there, like the percentage-wise? Because it seems to me that it's an increasing level in the city that drug, these drug shop wars are going back, and they're basically weed shops.
Colonel, would you have that?
I, I think we can, we can produce it. I don't know if it's going to necessarily show a direct correlation to marijuana, because it's CDS is how we're looking at it. So, I'm, I'm going to tell you, a large amount of these shootings are disputes, or robbery. For instance, the one that the Colonel was talking about downtown, the guy actually thought that he was pulling a stick out on him, but it was a shotgun. So, a lot of them are robbery-related, and a lot of them are disputes that we, you know, we just can't deploy for, so.
And just like if you think about, if you go back, Councilman, you think of the violence that we had earlier in, in the year, right? That, that was a dispute, not over drugs, but look how many, look how many bodies fell because of a dispute in southwest and west Baltimore, over that, really a very.
A rap video.
Just a real, what's that? Internet, yeah, and look how many, I mean, you know, daughters, grandmothers, it was just, you know, till we had to get, you know, to the root of that, so.
Councilman Pinkett has the last questions for the night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask a quick question related to, I guess, total number of arrests and the decline, at least it appears to be a decline in the, in the number of arrests. And, you know, just kind of, you just want to understand, you know, the trend as it relates to, you know, why, why are we arresting less, is it, you mean?
Because it's, it's very simple, it's quality over quantity. We don't want to mass-target anything, we want to extract the right individuals and, and put them in jail. I'll make no mistake about it, I want to, if you're out there terrorizing this city, I want to put you in prison. And it's not, we know, it's the old tactic of the Baltimore City Police, where he went in and, you know, took an area.
Right.
You know, we don't want to do that anymore, and that shows in the numbers.
And that'll also take officers out of service, we don't, you know, unnecessarily arrest people.
Okay.
Be smarter.
And, and I understand, I think oftentimes the constituents and general public don't understand, I mean, because their initial response is, you know, I see this guy, I see them all the time, lock them up, why, why are they? So, I, I don't, I'm not certain if the, the public understands the difference between sound police work and just, you know, you know, clearing a corner.
Well, that, that can also be another issue, we know, right? So, you know, we, we're, we're looking at. So, um, you know, we, we're, we're, we're looking at a multitude of things. Um, some of, some things could be training, um, that obviously we know that we need to do a better job with. The consent decrees certainly mandates that. And, uh, again, we're young, relatively a young agency too, with, uh, young supervision. I mean, we're at a different period, we recognize that. Um, we talked about this at our commi- uh, Comstat meeting the other day and I challenged everyone there because many of the people, particularly in the Colonel ranks and above, are all tenured people. And that, you know, we are really, really trying to restore a level of, uh, real competency and a real level of, uh, commitment and a real level of getting the agency where we know it can go. And the people that are sitting around in these chairs, they have that institutional knowledge. So I challenged them all. I said, if you're not reaching down and trying to guide a junior command staff member and trying to pull them up, whatever, and the Commissioner actually said this, uh, at, at a meeting last week as well. I mean, like, what are we really doing? He almost, uh, it was almost to the point, we should be working ourselves out of a job. And that, that's what happened, there was, there was too many voids in the agency for various reasons and, and look what it's kind of done to us. So we, we need to, it's a lot of work to do, but, you know, very confident with the leadership team, um, that's in place um, to, to getting that, it's just a matter of us, how do we trickle that down to the lowest level of the agency?
No, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, uh, no further question from our colleagues. I could thank everyone for being here tonight. Uh, clear your ears as the doors will be closing almost immediately after. I know that Richard is very hungry, he wants to eat as the rest of us do. So thank you for being here this evening.